We're going to call the meeting to order if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, and we are individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll tonight. All of our members are present except for Mr. Faulkner and Mr. Kofeld. And with that, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. I have the pleasure this evening of pleasure and also just the sadness of saying goodbye to some of our board members that have served this community. I'm going to start with Mrs. Dee Galian. And Dee served on the school board for two years. She was elected in November of 2013, and she's been on the Athletics Co-Curricular Committee since 2014. And she indicated that being on the board has been an educating and enlightening experience. She enjoyed the high school renovations and working with fellow board members to keep taxes low while preserving programs as much as possible. And I thank you for your service, Dee, and we put together just to thank you for your two years of service to the school board. So, thank you. Mr. Kofeld, who's not here yet, and I'm not sure if he's coming this evening. He might have exited a little early. He served the school board for four years. He was elected in 2011. He was the Operations and Facilities Chair. He was the JOC representative from 2013 to 2015. And he was also the JOC Policy Committee member, and that's the Western Montgomery Career and Tech Center. And he said that being on the board has been nonstop action, a learning experience that he wouldn't trade and he would do again, given the opportunity. So, thank you to Mr. Kofeld on behalf of all of us. And Mr. Faulkner couldn't be here with us this evening. And Mr. Faulkner served five years. He was elected in May of 2010. He was the Board Vice President from 2013 to 2015. He was also the Curriculum Technology and Student Affairs Chairman for 2013 to 15, and a Policy Committee Chair from 2012 to 2013. So, he will be missed, and he's been a valued member of our board. So, thank you to Mr. Faulkner. And last but not least, our Board President, Mr. Valentine, who served the board for four years. He was elected in December of 2011. He was the Board Secretary from June of 2012 to December of 2013, where he then became Board President and served through this term in December of 2015. He was also the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit Legislative Liaison from 2014 to 2015, and a Policy Committee Member from 2013 to 15. And his top accomplishments are the centers, one-to-one, and the high school renovation project. And I just wanted to thank you. And I know I got to work very closely with you as a Board President, so thank you for your support and all that you've done for the Pots Grove School District community.
Thank you. A public comment tonight. And Mr. Nifer. Yes?
Hi, I'm Mike Nifer, 60 Brookview Lane, Lower Pots Grove. Just wanted to publicly thank the four outgoing board members. It's an opportunity of a lifetime to serve your community. I got to work with three of the four for a period of time. Unfortunately, Dee, I didn't get to work with you. It's a great way to give back. For the new folks that are coming on board, it is life-changing. There'll be days when you'll probably question why you got into it, but the good definitely outweighs those troublesome times. And a personal note to Mr. Valentine, that is a difficult chair to sit in. And he sat in that for two years. You can't place a value on what it is to sit in that chair and have to make sure that you're moving towards consensus at all times, putting your personal feelings aside. Great job in the last two years doing that. Don't know what the direction of the board's going to be moving forward as far as leadership. Most, if you've been around the community for a number of years, you've seen different styles. Important thing for the board moving forward in the community, it's going to take time for the group to gel. We need to support that regardless of who we voted for. We need to support that and give it time to develop. I talked to Mr. Parker recently, and I said that to him as well. It doesn't happen overnight, but we need to come together as a community. It's been a little tumultuous over the last couple of years. I was part of that. And so, now's the time to get behind the board, support what it's doing, support the initiatives that it undertakes. I wish you guys well, the ones that are leaving. I wish you guys even more well coming on to the board. With that, move over here and let you guys have your meeting.
Thank you, Mike. Need to announce, the board did hold an executive session on November 5, 2015, to discuss negotiations. And with that, we're going to, I make a motion that we approve the monthly board minutes from 10:13:15. Motion and second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move that we approve the board action minutes from 10:27:15. Motion and second. Are there any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And with that, we're going to move to receiving the accounts for audit. Okay. We'll circle back to that. If we can move on to the action items.
Thank you, Mr. Valentine. I make recommendation that you approve the professional staff items as submitted.
Second.
Move to combine all personnel.
Second. Any questions or comments from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Guess I should have been specific up through, up to three, I guess, is what I meant? Or did I just do everything? I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
So, what's going to be through what?
Well, okay. Yeah, let's go up to four.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Just amend the motion. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to miscellaneous, then. I recommend that you approve the Act 93 salaries as submitted.
Second. Motion and second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement, an addendum, between the Pots Grove School District Directors and the Pots Grove School District Education Association as submitted.
Second. Motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments from the board? The only comment I have is that I'm very excited to approve this tonight for, on behalf of our teachers. I know it's been kind of a marathon over the last couple of months, but to come to an agreement that's fair, that's equitable, that supports our teachers and staff, it's a good thing. It's good to start fresh. And for the new board, it's one less thing on your plate, and we can focus on education and our kids in the classroom. So, thank you to Megan and the association, all those who were at the table, to Jeff Saltanic, all those that came, and the board for our engagement and involvement in the process. So, job well done, and tonight's a good night and a win for Pots Grove. So, with the The teachers have approved the collective bargain agreement on their side. So, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd just like to back up for a minute, and we had a removal from an appointment, so I'm not sure how I do that. Yeah, it was in error, under number B, appointments, number three, A.
With the board's permission, we'll just remove that from the approval, and that it was an error, and if someone objects to that...
No.
Okay. Then, moving on to business, I recommend that you approve the budget transfers as presented.
Motion and second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that you approve the budget transfers for the 2014-15 year end.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that you award the 2015-16 winter-spring athletic bid as presented.
Second. Motion and second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the board?
How does this compare to last year? Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I recommend that you recommit the $375,000 in the unused 2014 Peasars Reserve and commit to an additional $975,000 for future retirement rate increases.
So moved. Motion and a second. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
I recommend that you approve the change order request, GC077, for the Pots Grove High School renovation project as presented.
Can I motion that we group all these together, approve them together, the change orders? That's fine. That's fine. We can ask the questions. So, is there a second to that motion? And then, go ahead, John.
Just a couple of questions, maybe for my clarification. GC086. Now, I understand that, sorry, I understand that this has come in under the original estimate anyway. My question is, the damage during the removal of the chalk and whiteboards in these rooms. Contractor is responsible for patching, but it was well beyond what was expected. I guess this is a moot point, but I just want to bring it up anyway. If they were responsible for removing it and fixing it, why would it be an issue if it was in excess? My question is, the bid came in lower, so we're okay. If that bid would have came in higher, the question would have been, why would we have to cover that difference if it was their responsibility to begin with? And they knew what they were getting into? That's my question, on one of them.
The issue on this was there were different contractors performing the demolition work because the, when the marker boards were removed from the wall, it was to get, to remove the asbestos-containing mastic that was holding them on the wall. So, the asbestos abatement contractor was the one who did the removal. And with plaster, when you remove, things stuck to plaster, the plaster comes off with it many times. So, the general contractor was responsible for the patching, not the asbestos abatement contractor.
Two different, okay. GC089, the painting in the cafeteria. Did we authorize that original bright blue color? And that's something that, once we saw it, we didn't like it? Or is that something that somebody put on there? That's my question.
To be honest with you, now that I see that on there, I don't think we should be paying for that.
That's my question.
That, I missed that.
It is a change order, so it needs to be processed as such, but the architectural firm has agreed to pay for this.
Thank you.
What color are they changing it to?
It's a tan. It's very similar to this wall color.
Some of the high school students kind of made mention that there's a lot of blue in this maroon and white school.
More green. Not too much blue.
Yeah, just some kids were making comments. So, we just want to make sure that our Pottstown-to-Pots Grove color ratio is not over the limit.
I have a couple more here. MC026, somebody's going to explain to me how it's going to cost us $3,147 to replace a dryer vent. I need to know the cost of that. And I don't see anybody here from the construction. But that, to me, I mean, I'm looking at some of the other things on here that are much more intense work than replacing a dryer vent. And at $3,000, I'm questioning it. And I want to see something that says, "It's going to cost us that much money to replace a dryer vent." Really? That's my question. So, I'd like to see something on that before we give them their money to do this. Unless it's majorly holding up something, but I don't see that it is. And who can answer this question? MC031, chilled water valves were identified throughout the building improperly. They were faulty valves. Have we had a problem with this over the last couple of years before this? I mean, is this something we knew about, and so we're going to take advantage of getting them fixed now? Which is fine.
I don't know if we knew about them, but as you uncover all the systems within the building, you see valves that are in poor condition, that aren't being exercised properly. So, they need to be replaced.
And other than, it's nice to see some of the money in givebacks that we're getting, which is quite a bit. I think that's a good thing that we're at the point where now we're starting to call back the money that we put out there because we're not using it. So, I think that's a good thing. And that were all the questions I had on the...
To follow Mr. Rossi's points, the public understands these change orders are both what are called add and deduct. And even though there are certain additions that Mr. Rossi pointed out, as he suggested, there's significant reductions, what are called credit or deductions for items that either came in another cost or certain allowances we're not going to use.
I'm a little confused, too, because we got a list of change orders on our action items, and I'm not seeing all of them in our agenda. So, to, for example, the credit backs, are they here? And I'm just not seeing them?
Well, the ones that are over $10,000 are on the board agenda.
Right.
The ones that are under $10,000 were for your information, because we take care of those. We have authorization to take care of those.
Thank you.
So, then, the one that, the question about the dryer vent, that's under $10,000, so that's not something that we...
We can get more information for you to explain it, but the change order has already been approved.
Right, I understand that. Where is the one that gives us back $190,000 on our agenda?
091. GC091.
196.
The credit change, it's in red.
It's not on the agenda.
No, it's under FYI, it's giving back.
Okay, because we don't have to approve it since we're getting money back, right? So, it just looks...
They need to...
Dave, you should only put them on the agenda because arguably, you know, it's still an agreement between the parties.
Unless you don't want the money, Rick, then we'll...
You're making it easier for me to vote no on this, because it's not in there. But I guess my point is that if we're going to put on our agenda that we're spending extra money, we should at least also make it clear that we're getting credit back.
We'll make that correction.
Thank you.
Well, let me just go through them real quickly, so that the record's clear. It looks like, and Dave will shally help me, that we're also going to approve GC084, GC085, GC091, by the way, which is $196,000. We're going to...
Credit.
Credit.
Right.
These are all credits I'm reading. MC034, PC10.
MC21.
PC16, another $180,000, by the way. They're the ones that appear to be credits from the...
Missed 21, too, Mike.
MC21.
MC21.
$595,000. Good luck.
So, I think that they ought to be in there, too. It's still an agreement.
Okay. So, we're going to amend the...
Minutes?
Well, we're going to amend this motion to include those.
Yeah.
Do we have a total on all of our credits? Because this is a lot of, when you start adding them up, they're fairly significant.
I have it written down. I have $595,243.59. And I used that with a calculator, so hopefully it was working. Actually, did it three times.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Moving on to number 12, then. I recommend that you approve the payment of the invoices listed above.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I recommend that you approve conference attendance as presented.
Motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Was there any opposed? No.
Give you a break on your last day.
Thank you.
As soon as the projector comes on, I wanted to take a minute. We had it on earlier. I don't know what happened. Oh, we can do that first.
Yep.
Okay. I move that we make a motion in the high school counts, middle school counts, and cafeteria counts as presented.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question. Is there any way, and I don't know if it's a lot of work, but when we go down our list and we look at all the things that we're paying out and paying in and all incoming outgoing, there's a lot of things on these line items that are just a name, like a person's name. Now, it could be their supplement. I don't know if the supplement gets paid every two weeks, or if it gets paid in one lump sum. But there's other things of names I've never even heard of. Not company names, but just, I'll throw out the generic name, Joe Smith. Is there any way we could put out what that's for, so we can see what we're paying? I understand, you know, Abel's Glass Company is a piece of glass for whether it's a door or window. We understand that. Or the book company. But when it's just a person's name, is there any way we can have something out there on that line that says supplemental pay, mileage, something? I'd like to see what we're paying these named people for. Some of the names, I don't even know who they are. And I'm sure they're perfectly legit, but I'd like to see what, who's, why they're getting it. I just happened to thoroughly read that today when I actually had a lunch break, and I thoroughly read the whole package. So, I would like to know if that's possible.
Look into it.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Jumping ahead.
Aye.
I move that we approve the payments of invoices in the amount of $6,385,210.31 for October 2015 as presented.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
I move that we approve the Treasury report for October 2015 as presented and file it for audit.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For one of our discussion items this evening, I wanted to take a minute to talk with you about the state budget and give you an update. Dave and I want to give you an update. We spent today at the Capitol along with several other Montgomery County superintendents, principals, and business officials, and intermediate unit executives. And it was really quite eye-opening for me, because the legislators are, you know, in the process of trying to pass a state budget. Now, now that we're in the fifth month without a budget, it seems to be coming to a critical stage in terms of wanting to get this budget passed. And as the talk of this budget deal increases, we need to be pressing on our policymakers that we not only need a budget, but we need one that's going to provide fair and equitable funding for Pots Grove and for the education of all students in Pennsylvania. Today, Dave and I had appointments with Senator Mench, Representative Topol. We spoke with Senator Rafferty's aide, and we were hoping to speak with Representative Quigley, but it was delayed. So, we weren't able to make that appointment because he delayed it. There's just a picture of the rotunda as speakers were making their presentations. I also ran into some neighboring school district board members from Springfords. So, my friends, Mr. Cerizzi and Mr. Dibello were also there today, speaking with us. Just to speak with you a little bit about Senate Bill 909, we were specifically talking about this bill because we wanted to make sure that our representatives and our senators realize that putting a referendum on the ballot every single time that we wanted to raise taxes would be quite a burden for all of Pennsylvania school districts, particularly in Montgomery County. Every school district, with the exception of one, stands to lose money should this bill or part of this bill be incorporated into the budget passage that is slated to happen. It doesn't reduce property taxes. People think that it does. It essentially eliminates Act 1 and all of its exceptions. So, it will really put us in a bind in terms of your ability as school directors to make informed decisions on behalf of the community of Pots Grove on what you would like to see happen. And I guess this coupled with the fact that we have unfunded mandates has really put us in a situation where our hands will be tied. And when I speak about unfunded mandates, I'm talking about our Peasars retirement system. I'm talking about our charter school tuition and how much money is going out the door for charter school. And I'm also talking about special education costs that are unanticipated or that we can't really appropriately budget for. And over the past few years, Peasars and charter school tuition combined were responsible for an aggregate annual increase in school district budgets of over 25%. And Dave's going to get into a few details specifically about Pots Grove, but across the Commonwealth, this is really an issue. And we cannot predict these fluctuations in cost for these services. Just to move to our budget for a second, we have approximately $64 million budget for 15-16. 29% of it is provided by the state, but 70% is generated locally. So, should Senate Bill 909 go into effect, or some part of that be incorporated into the passage of the budget, it would be restricting that 70% of dollars that we're able to generate locally. And Dave's got some specific details that show us implications for Pots Grove, and he's going to explain those to you now.
For the school board, I gave you some handouts, which we thought you shared with the representatives today. But I think it's safe to say that the one thing we heard today was that anything and everything is on the table. And that they're also motivated to get a budget set up quickly, which is concerning, because sometimes things pop in when you're trying to rush things. But here in Pots Grove, what, first off, what has been proposed to date is a $350 million increase in basic ed funding, a $50 million increase in both special ed and perhaps pre-K funding. And in order to generate property tax relief, you're talking about raising the sales tax rate from 6% to 7 and 1/4% and earmarking all the proceeds from that sale... all the proceeds from that sales tax to offset property taxes. One thing they're not talking very, very loudly about is the fact that the gambling money that is currently funding property tax relief is going to be pulled out of the system and put into another designated pot to allow the state to contribute their fair share to the pension system. So what I'm going to tell you about now is what the $350 million basic ed funding increase represents to Pottsgrove School District and how it interacts with our potential ability to raise property taxes and/or balance our budget, if you will. What's proposed, if the $350 million is rolled out in accordance with the basic ed funding formula, which the legislature agreed to last year but never enacted, we would be entitled to receive $365,000. To put that in perspective, on a $64 million budget, that is slightly over half of 8% of our budget. So if you look at a 1% property tax increase, it would generate $389,000. This year, our Act One index, which we've been working with since 2006, would allow us to raise taxes up to 2.4%, and because Pottsgrove is a core district, we get an additional adjusted index if we wanted to do so, if we felt we needed to do so, which would allow us to raise taxes up to 3.1%. And you can see there on the far right is, what is being proposed right now is that the additional income, the additional money contributed to basic ed funding is spoken about to be tied to a back-end referendum. And I've always been a proponent to say that if we go to the voters and say, will you support raising taxes, or you really don't need to finish the sentence, the answer will be no. And I think most communities would be that. But in this case, we would get $365,000 of additional revenue, but we would lose the ability to raise taxes without voter approval going forward. Given some of the information I'll show you next, you will see how difficult that will make things. Here is our charter school spending over the last five years. You can see that in 2011, '12, we were spending right around $1 million for charter school tuition. This year in our budget, it's $1.9 million. This has been one of our fastest-growing expenses over the last four years. Even though if you look at our SPP scores lately, you'll see that we outperform every charter school that's listed, specifically, especially the cyber charter schools, but there are still people within our community selecting those as an alternative, and we have to pay the cost for those students to be educated. The other largest driver that we have in our budget is our contributions to the retirement fund. And this has been talked about at length in the past. We are in the process of getting up to a maximum rate of about 33% contribution for retirement, and since 2011, '12, once again, we started out right around $1 million, and in this year's budget, our expenditures are $3.3 million. That's net of estate share. So if you look at that, it's very easy to see that a $3 million or $2.3 million increase in an expenditure line cannot be covered by $365,000 of a one-time revenue, because there is no guarantee of future increases throughout the year to allow you to have any inflation in your budget at all. So this makes it very, very concerning with the back-end referendum concept. So once again, what's being proposed is a one-time increase of approximately $365,000, which represents a half a percent of our total budget. There's no guarantee for future funding of $365 or any increase in it. And what will happen if something of this nature is put in place, not just in Pottsgrove, but across the Commonwealth, is that public schools will be forced to cut and cut and cut to the point where our programs don't represent what our community wants. My fear is that the community may not see that until it happens, and, you know, so they may not be able to grasp the need for approval of a referendum until the programs are gone, the staff is gone, the class sizes rise too high, the building's getting, just going to disrepair, and things like that. Now, with regards to the sales tax and what kind of property tax relief a homeowner may get in Pottsgrove areas, there is no guarantees here, so please take this for a grain of salt. We don't know how the money's going to be driven out to us, we don't know who's going to be eligible for the tax relief, there is some talk of not just homesteads, but also commercial properties, we don't know what's going to happen. But currently, what's in on our property tax relief program from the state is approximately $600 million annually, of which Pottsgrove gets about $1.5 million. What's being proposed is a $2 million property tax relief from the revenue generated from the additional sales tax. Two billion, sorry, thank you. Which is really a $1.4 billion increase. It's not a $2 billion increase, it's a $1.4 billion increase because the $600 million will be lost. So in Pottsgrove, our current tax deduction on the average homestead is $277. Under this proposal, the projected property tax relief would be $923, based on a variety of assumptions, of assumptions I made that may or may not be accurate at this point in time. Another thing that this field will talk about is Senate Bill 76, which will be coming to vote tomorrow. So we looked at what it might, what Senate Bill 76 is, is the total elimination of property taxes. It will take a huge investment in other taxes in order to generate the total eliminations of property taxes. I estimated here what it would take to eliminate the property tax on the average homestead in Pottsgrove school district. And in addition to the $2 billion that has been proposed, I'm looking at $7.9 billion additional dollars of revenue needed to drive out that much property tax relief. In conversation with representatives today, the number is really statewide, $12 billion. That's what we generate in property taxes for school districts across the state. So $12 billion. Everybody's upset about a 7 and 1/4% property or sales tax, what would you need to do to get the other $10 billion? It's a monumental effort and a lot of questions go along with it. You know, our recommendation is that a back-end referendum would be very difficult for schools, especially schools in the eastern part of the state to take care, to deal with. There are some regions where the school districts get 80 or 90% of their budget from basic education subsidies. They might not have that big of a problem with this concept, but when you're getting $365,000, as we are, to offset any increases in a $64 million budget, we just don't see how it's going to work effectively, since we already rely so heavily on the government.
And as Dave mentioned, I just wanted to also bring your attention, we weren't even aware of this until this morning when we met with Senator Mench, that the Senate is bringing Senate Bill 76 back for a vote tomorrow, and as Dave said, it's an elimination of property taxes, but it also includes the increase in the sales tax from a 6% to 7%. It broadens the base to include more services and products in that sales tax, and it raises the personal income tax from 3.07% to 4.34%, but we feel that we will be significantly underfunded should they entertain a Senate Bill 76, and we will be forced to make cuts in order to maintain what we have in Pottsgrove.
Shelley, I just want to add that even if they level fund us to start with 76, the effect of this is that all our funds are coming from the state.
Right.
And it's hard to imagine a situation where little Pottsgrove's going to get a fair deal as time goes on. And, you know, the larger districts with the bigger political clout are going to get a larger share of these funds. I just, I mean, honestly, I'm all for a property tax reduction if it's done intelligently. I actually even think that the bill that was passed last fall, last spring by the House wasn't too bad because it was a partial reduction, a pretty significant 35 or 40%, but it didn't come with any strings attached to it like the back-end referendum. So all I can say to people is, you know, we all want property tax reduction, but what's being proposed is going to hurt this district, and I highly recommend anybody here or watching this write to your senators, your state senator and your state assemblyman and the governor, and let them know how unhappy you are with what's being planned. Thank you, I'm sorry to interject.
Another component that was brought up in the conversation today, which I didn't really think of at the time, but it makes a lot of sense, with the sales tax implications, the eastern part of the state, southeastern Pennsylvania has the highest per capita income in the state, and they spend the highest amount per capita in the state, to the extent where the projections are that our general region provides, would provide about 50% of the increase in sales tax to the entire state. Yet, we will get very limited additional funding through the basic ed formula because we're wealthier districts compared to some of the others. So, again, it's, everything's a balancing act, I get that, but we're really struggling to see where our region benefits from this program.
And I wanted to add that this was an eye-opening experience for me because I didn't really, I didn't realize how uninformed some of the legislators are, and they're talking in small caucuses and groups, and they're not even hearing all of the information. And it wasn't until, you know, our organizations like PSBA and PASA and PASBO alerted us to some of the conversations in the back, and then we were able to start contacting our legislators to bring to their attention this back-end referendum and what this could look like. And even so much as today, telling our representative about House Bill 76 and them not understanding what's going on in the various meetings was quite eye-opening and quite scary in terms of, you know, they don't have all the information, yet they're being asked to make a vote or, you know, decide what they would like to support, and they're only hearing from certain constituents and not all of their constituents. So I think that's why we have this slide up here, to really recommend that, you know, all taxpayers and all school personnel, officials, and so on, reach out and make their point known. I wanted to also alert you to a letter that's in your packet, and that's just an example of a letter that came from John George to the majority and minority leaders. There's another letter that went out to, I don't know if I gave you the Senate or the House, but it's essentially the same letter, and it's signed on behalf of all the superintendents in Montgomery County. So we're trying to push our wishes out and make them known. Also, while we were sitting here tonight, Tina Valetto, our legislative liaison, texted me and indicated that the House of Ed Committee just made an announcement that they have a notice for a vote tomorrow concerning Senate Bill 880, and that's the two-year moratorium on the keystones as a graduation requirement. So I guess there'll be more to come in terms of what they're going to do with that later this week, and we hope to hear more information. I have a phone conference with Senator Mench on Thursday with some other superintendents to hear a little bit more about the details because the details haven't really been put forth, and so no one really knows exactly what this budget proposal will end up looking like.
I just wanted to comment, like Rick, I personally, I don't like property taxes, I don't like paying property taxes, I do it every year because I have to, but, and property tax reduction would be great. However, this plan seems to take Pottsgrove dollars, send it to the state, and hope and pray that they're going to come back to our school district. Instead of taking our dollars, giving them to our local school district, they're going to go to Harrisburg and take their word for it that it's going to come back. I don't know about everybody else, but I personally have not seen good results when you send your money down to Harrisburg. They tend to do other things with it rather than send it back to you. So I agree with Rick, this is, property tax reduction is great, this is not the way to do it.
Another interesting thing about the bill that was passed in the spring that I mentioned is the wealthier districts were against it as well. I heard a lot of talk at the MCIU meeting from some of our better financed districts, and they felt that what was going to happen was their tax dollars were going to go to districts like us, and like Pottstown, and that it was going to cut their funding. So that may be why that bill has subsequently withered on the vine because they have a lot of influence. You know, I don't know what the right answer is, but I just know what they're proposing now does not seem like the right answer or anything close. And I had another question. You mentioned a bunch of unfunded mandates, but isn't the whole testing regimen in Pennsylvania something of an unfunded mandate? I mean, do they give us extra money because we provide the keystones and the PSSAs to our students and devote all that time and energy?
No, and one of the things that's on the table right now are the project-based assessments, and they haven't definitively determined whether they're going to put a moratorium on that. We heard about that in the summer, and we've got to make decisions in terms of how we do our scheduling for students to be able to offer that, those interventions next year, and that's really coming now, and we've got to have a decision, yet they don't seem to be able to make one.
Any other comments? Was that all you had, Dave? Thank you. Committee items? Right. Yeah.
All right, in Mr. Faulkner's accents, I'll do the grading committee. Are we just approving the minutes?
Yeah, we already talked about the-
Right, so should I just make a motion to approve the minutes?
To accept the minutes.
To make, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the academic affairs committee.
Second. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye.
And I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for the policy committee meeting on October 27, 2015.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Athletics Co-Curricular Activities Committee meeting that we held this evening.
Well, yours isn't, your minutes aren't ready yet, but what you might want to do is just make a report out about what you discussed. Yours is just a committee report.
Okay, okay, what was on there. Tonight, we did meet, and all our fall parents' meetings are upcoming. Gary's the best athletic director, and I say this all the time, of what we could have. And one thing that's always brings to mind is these students are student athletes. Their academics come before their athletic ability. They're called student athletes. But we did have a success, and we would like to congratulate the boys soccer team for winning- winning the District One double-A title. And at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the awards for the two thousand and fifteen boys soccer team for winning districts. Very proud of the kids. Whatever their awards are, we're not sure.
I guess when you said the awards, it's been the tradition that when a team has went to...
I don't think they know what their award is yet because they...
This was, I just wanted to make a motion. Traditionally, the kids get jackets and plaques.
Right.
But I, I'm going to say, let's give them just plaques and jackets, but I'm not sure what they want.
Okay.
You know, budget-wise, I wasn't sure.
Understood. So we're motioning and approving just an award?
No, we're going to change that now.
Okay.
We're going to go to district jackets.
Okay.
And we're going to just district plaques.
Got it. Which I think is great. I think we should celebrate our athletic teams, yeah. So, with that, all those in favor? Thank you. And with that, we're going to go to our student board representative, Dominique Johnson.
All right, just a, you're good. The report on the board this week from students and the events occurring this week and the week prior. Last week, West Posh Grove Elementary started their holiday food drive. The children also did many activities in the classrooms to commemorate Veterans Day. This week, we welcomed visitors to our annual American Education Week visitation on Monday, November sixteenth, from nine-thirty to eleven a.m. We will also be doing many activities to celebrate Thanksgiving. On Friday, November twentieth, our PTA is hosting Bingo Night. Ringing Rocks Elementary is looking forward to going down to the high school to see the musical production of The Fabulous Fable Factory this week, and hosting our guests for the American Education Week. Lower Posh Grove Elementary enjoyed an assembly on Friday, November thirteenth, from Joe "The Trick Star" Odiumbo. He shows students that all people can succeed in life through five attributes. Joe believes in faith in yourself, persistence, patience, working hard, and responsibility. This week, they are celebrating American Education Week. Their children and their teachers are very proud of our school and incredibly excited to show off their classrooms. Last week, Posh Grove Middle School wore crazy socks, had crazy hair day, wore neon, turned their clothes backwards, and wore boots. All these efforts reinforced our collective decision to avoid drugs and alcohol. Also, staff and students created I-Books and used the results to commemorate Veterans Day during their lessons. Special thanks to Apple Professional Development Specialist Chris Hyde for his assistance and the process. This week, we begin after school PSSA tutoring for math and English language arts students. Tutoring will take place Tuesday and Thursday until the PSSA exams in the spring. At Posh Grove High School last week, the Key Club hosted a Veterans Day breakfast to honor American veterans. We had close to fifty veterans in attendance, and we were grateful to have Posh Grove School Board member, Mr. John Rossi, and a U.S. Marine participated and welcomed the veterans. Key Club raised over a hundred dollars for our health and wellness program during the senior football game by way of the Veggie Race tickets and donations. Seniors Emily Ginecki and Gabby Ermas both signed letters of intent to play Division One sports. Emily with Arizona State University for swimming, and Gabby with Bryant University in softball. This week, students will be performing the children's musical, The Fabulous Fable Factory, on Wednesday at seven p.m. The school counselor is scheduled to have a parent financial aid night on Monday, November thirtieth, at six-thirty p.m. in the library. As a recap of the Harlem Wizards, the Harlem Wizards was a big hit early November. Being a member of the Key Club, I was able to help with the setup and operations with working the game. It was a lot of fun for everyone. There was a huge turnout of people of all ages. Key Club was able to raise over two hundred dollars on the snack bar we ran as well, which is always a plus for the growth of the club. That concludes the board report.
Thank you, Dominique. And with that, we're going to move on to new business. Starting new business?
I don't know if it's new business, I mentioned something. I, Mr. Johnson, I want to thank you and your Key Club for the Veterans Day breakfast. My father accompanied me. I've been to a lot of these, and this was by far ranked right up there with the best. The band, the Key Club members, all you students, how professionally you carried yourself. And I must say, later that evening, I went to Applebee's over here in Pottstown, and I got to tell you, the breakfast I had at the high school and the service I got at the high school far outshined the free meal that I got at Applebee's. So I want to thank you, I hope we can do it again. I think it was a great success. I heard nothing but positive comments from everybody who attended. So thank you, and go back to your Key Club fellow students and tell them thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
I will tell them that, and thank you, thank you for your services.
You're welcome, thank you.
I think also that night, we raised some money for the education foundation. Do we, anyone know what the amount raised that night?
I don't have the exact number with me, I apologize, but it was in excess of six thousand dollars. We had nine hundred and eighty-one tickets sold, and when you add in the cheerleaders and the volunteers for the event, I mean, we were pretty close to capacity for the event. And everybody seemed to enjoy it, the kids especially. So...
My son had a really great time. You know, when they come back, if you missed it, I can't recommend it. I wouldn't, I would also say, not just him, but I had a great time. It was, it was an amazing show of athleticism and comedy and showmanship all in one. It was a great show. And what I was thinking about is, having seen the Harlem Globetrotters as a child and comparing what I saw live, it was every bit the same quality for, I would imagine, a fraction of the cost in comparison. So, I hope they come back.
I just wanted to make, say thank you. It's been a crazy two years being on the board. At times, I appreciate all my fellow board members. I want to say thank you for all of your mentorship and all your friendship, and it's been a really wonderful experience working with you. I think there's also some unsung heroes to the board members. Sometimes our meetings go really, really late, they go really, really long, and when the PTAs are so generous in their hospitality to bring brownies and drinks and treats, it makes our job so much easier, and I think sometimes we don't say thank you enough to the PTAs and those who supply the hospitality. So, I just wanted to say that one of the highlights of being on the board was getting to partake of the treats that you guys supplied to us. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to wing this. I've been through two passports now, and one of my biggest concern is the transition. And when you guys came on, again, we didn't know who you were or how things were going to go. Dee, you're absolutely amazing with what you do to the community. Justin, I can't say enough about you, you know, I mean, I don't want to get emotional here. Dave Faulkner, being the leader he is, and my buddy Ted, who stood by me with all my hot flashes I had when I was going through all my cancer treatments. He stood through them. Current board, we're going to be okay, we're going to be okay. I look forward, we had a workshop with the incoming board, with the great administration, and it's just going to be a change. You're not going away, you're not going away. You're going to keep us posted on things that we can come out and enjoy, and you have the schedule where we'll be. So, but I thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
And Ted's not here because he thought we're supposed to meet tomorrow. He just sent me a text, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Dee. I actually wrote something that I wanted to read before. Does anybody have any remarks they wanted to make? So, had to write it, so I'm not going to get a, Evan told me to wait. Oh, boy. Wait a second. Right, right, it's okay. As we also know, tonight is my final meeting as a director of the Pots Grove School Board, and my four-year term is drawing to a close. I wanted to take a few minutes to thank a few people before leaving tonight. I would like to thank the Pots Grove community for giving me the opportunity to serve, and it has been a real honor to be a part of this board, and for that, I'm truly grateful. I would like to thank Mike Knifer and Scott Fulmer and the members of the previous board for embracing me as a young board member, and I truly learned a lot from Mike and Scott, whose years of service and sacrifice to this community should be well appreciated. They navigated this district through some difficult times and placed us in the position we are today to experience the growth that we are achieving in the classroom. I would like to thank my colleagues on the board for all of our hard work over the past four years, and also with entrusting me with the opportunity to serve as president of the board. Can't verify this, but probably was one of the youngest, if not the youngest, school board president in the Commonwealth. And over the past four years, we did a lot of work to progress the district and move it forward. The centers configuration, the implementation of full-day kindergarten, we brought back many district, outside district placements to be educated in their local district. We've settled two teachers' contracts, implemented one-to-one, and we renovated our high school, we began renovation on our high school, which is soon to be completed. I would like to thank our administration for working hard each and every day for all of our students here at Pots Grove, and special thank you to Shelley, Ms. Viola. You've put together here an excellent team of professionals here that are focused on education and doing what's best for our students. Over the last few weeks, we've heard outstanding news from the state about our test scores and performance profiles in the elementary schools and the high school that indicate that we are on the right path. Thank you, Ms. Viola, for working tirelessly on behalf of this district, and I hope that the tremendous work you have done on behalf of the administrators, teachers, our staff, and students solidifies your tenure within this district for many years to come. Thank you to our fine teachers and staff. I have two high school, two girls that are in high school who are outstanding students and citizens because of the caring people that we entrust with our children on a daily basis, and we're thankful for all your hard work and dedication. All of our principals, Dr. Ziegler, Dr. Ramage, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Kohler, Mrs. Jones, thank you for being leaders in our buildings, and at some point, my children have had the pleasure of experiencing all of you at some point, and they are better today because of it. I especially want to thank one teacher in particular, Mrs. May. Man, you got me. Who is my son's teacher at West. When we voted on centers and to add an autistic support class that my son would be the beneficiary of this decision, I didn't know back then. But when my son makes his bus trip from our home in Lower to his school in West every day, we're grateful that he comes in contact with hard-working professionals and that he interacts with every day. Mrs. May, his teacher, and Mr. Lawrence are heroes to my family. For taking my son, who could barely say his name when he started school, to now being a first grader who is excelling in reading, math, and writing. To me, they embody what is great about Pots Grove. A commitment to excellence and making sure all of our children have opportunity. From Mr. Wyman in the elementary orchestra to Mrs. Williams at the middle school, to Rick Pennypacker and his football program, Mr. Kelly and his stage plays. I mean, there's so many things to be proud of here at Pots Grove. From Color Day to the bonfire, to field days, to pep rallies, to student sections, spirit weeks, every invocation, benediction, every tradition that is great here at Pots Grove, I pray that we continue because that's what makes Pots Grove unique and strengthens the bonds of our community. And lastly, I have to say thank you to my wife and my children for the very late, late, very late nights. They used to stay up, now they just go to bed. Early morning calls, weekend calls, vacation calls, they've tolerated, they put up with rants that they have no idea what I was talking about, listening to arguments about state funding and formula, and hearing about Rick and everyone, John and Shelley, and no matter who it is, at any given moment, you could hear it from me. But I'm grateful that I had an opportunity to serve. And to those that are coming onto the board, welcome. It's going to be a great experience. We look forward to seeing what you all are going to do in moving the district forward. So I apologize for getting emotional, but that's, I really love my son. So, with that, Ted, I wanted to say thank you to you and Dave. He handed me tissues. And to all of you, it's been an honor to serve, and I wanted to say thank you all, so, thank you. So, Ted, did you want to say something?
It was a wild ride. It was everything I didn't expect, seriously. When we came in here, I remember the night, how we walked, we walked into the first meeting, it was in the cafeteria, and I thought, the parking lot's full. They must be excited that we're being sworn in tonight. I did not have a clue that the discussion about the centers was happening, and oh my goodness, I had no idea what I walked into. And it's just been, it's been exciting. There's been challenges every step of the way. Big change personnel. We had to, we lost a superintendent, we got another superintendent. There's no, there's no lull in the action. But it's all been, it's all been good. I wouldn't trade it for anything, and I'd do it again. So, to the oncoming board, thank you for your willingness to serve, buckle your seatbelts. And thank you, it's been, it's been nice. The friendships and the associations that I've developed have just been, I don't know, I don't have words to explain, but in a few years, you get to know people really well, and I'll value these friendships and relationships for the rest of my life, and all of the knowledge and understanding, because I'd never served on a public board. I'd served on other organization boards, but I'd never been on a public board, so it was a great experience for me. It's a different challenge, but it's all good. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you, Ted. With that, I think we'll...
I just have one more thing to do again. I just would like to do today, and a happy birthday tomorrow.
Any volunteers to sing? Yeah, with that, we're going to make a motion that we adjourn. All those in favor? Aye. He seconded. Or if it's need be, that it has to be presented more than once, but there has to be a little bit more of the circle of trust here of, you know, that we're trusting the committees, what the recommendations from the committees are, bringing to the whole board, which I, I don't think it was an issue. For me, it's not an issue of how many nights or how long we're actually here. It's more, do, do we want to hear, how many times do you want to hear the same information over and over again? So I'm not against it. I just, like I said, we, we need to, in my opinion, to try to eliminate some of the redundancy in the meeting and, and meetings like this as well, you know, where we're rehashing the same information that went in the committee when the committee already made forth, put forth a recommendation.
Well, I agree with you there, although being with facilities- Being with facilities and having the facilities remain, which I think is, I, I think it's a good idea because there, there, there is a lot of expense and especially with everything that we've got going on with all the construction. I think it's, it's, it's the, the most prudent way to approach eliminating the redundancy because you'd have to, you'd, you'd have to go over all the explanations over again anyway, so, so, so it doesn't really affect me that, that much in terms of my participation in that. But I'm, I'm more than glad to go back to the, the old structure that we have, so, if it's, if it's amenable with everybody else.
It's, I'm in agreement too. I'm also in agreement with what Justin said, which is, if we're going to do it, then let's do it, but let's get together first and, and plan it better. I'd be okay however, however it hashes out, you know, I was a committee chair for policy if, if the board would want me to, you know, report out to them the next day in email form what went on the night before, so that if they have questions before the next board meeting when we come and ask them to approve something, you know, I'd, I'd be willing to do that. I, whatever we need to do, but we should plan it better. I, I agree with what you said, there was a lot of redundancy there, made the meeting, made the main board meetings go longer and, and we do have to develop that. If there's, if there's a committee of three that's putting forward a recommendation of the board that, you know, we've got that level of teamwork and trust that we can just move forward with a recommendation, that'd be good too.
Is there three, like, three or four volunteers for, to meet with Shelley next week maybe?
Let's make this close to date.
Seventeenth through the 22nd, because I'm on vacation. So you guys are up.
I can ask for a volunteer.
Right, that's why I said you guys.
Sure.
Rick, Matt.
I'd be willing to also.
Okay.
Matt, Patty, and Rick.
Yep.
I have one more thing, but I'll defer to the next meeting. It's not nearly as important as the other ones.
One, one other thing, just if I could throw my two cents before you guys meet is, there are certain things that go on that of course, don't need to be discussed in maybe that meeting. So facilities right now, the high school project, you know, high school project is something that probably when things go down, it should be discussed among all of us. The budget as a whole, you know, amongst all of us, you know, so I guess those are the things I would ask, that you kind of pick out certain things that don't need to go in the committee per se, but those things would be addressed as a whole. So I think-
But Rick's motion said except for facilities, so you didn't want to have a facilities committee at all, right?
Well, I wanted to keep it as a committee of, of the whole as part of, as part of the board meeting like we've been doing on, on the committee day, with our work sessions. So keep that part of, of that. That was my suggestion, but if we're going to meet and talk about it, you know, I'm open to alternatives. It just seems to me like that was the one where we always did rehash because there was large expenses. So why not just keep that one as committee of the whole? And then we'll all be participating in, in that most important, very important committee and then the rest of them will, we would schedule out.
All right. So we're going to practice committees next week. So the, the committee's committee is going to meet about committees and then come back to us with a recommendation about what we should do with the committees. I like it. All right. You had another thing, but you said it can wait till next meeting? And any other new business?
No, I do have a question. How did we leave the TV question? Are we going to look into it further?
We're looking into that further.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shirk.
Dr. Shirk and I are already first.
Oh, there you go.
All right. Any other-
I have an answer, but we'll try to give you some suggestions or-
Any other new business?
Again, Jeff's waiting, so I don't want to all jump, but I just wanted to mention that, you know, you know-
Mention that the administration didn't any way dream this up. It is in the school code. It does talk about people in student activities having a, a TB test. And so all we did was incorporate it at the same time with the things we do for 153, but I think that Bill and I are certainly more than pleased to take a further look at it. I was not involved and it's not critical at all. The analysis came from a different service you use and I'm not saying they're all wrong, they appear to be correct, but we'll chat about it.
And, and I want to make clear that, that I wasn't criticizing anybody in, in bringing it up.
I'm sorry if I-
Just, just, just making, trying to, I, there's been a lot of pain associated with this that's been expressed from the community and, and I just wanted to give it voice.
Fair enough.
With that, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Have a good night, everyone.